Has anyone seen Matthew?
There's cars here. Actually, there are pictures today.
There's a lot of people in here. A lot of people in here. The heat's gonna rise. The heat is gonna rise.
Last meeting, it was so cold in here. It was freezing.
Don't we do it on the school?
Yeah.
I did come from an office where my computer was running. Jimmy and I have our own office now, our side of the building. I don't think Jake and I can even face each other much at all. We're like our own boss.
This sounds like a lot.
Big arms.
Rogue, the rogue.
Basically, all the time they say I'm like so rogue. Don't use it at home or something. Like, I put all my own things there, like, all of any of them.
All right. It's kinda cool to look out and see all the faces and stuff. So, we will reconvene our meeting that started at 11 o'clock this morning for an executive session to discuss Matt's evaluation. And so, City Clerk has also declared a quorum at 11:00. So, next up is Commissioner Dick with Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow. Dear God, thank you for giving us today. Be with our farmers as they start their growing season, and please keep them safe as they do their jobs. Please provide for them the rains and conditions that they need to be prosperous. Be with our students and teachers too, as they're on their last stretch for the school year. Please give them the patience and determination needed to achieve their educational goals. And be with us as we meet today, and please help us be wise as we make our decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see anything that needed to be changed? Okay? If not, the minutes are approved as read, or approved as written. Next up is public comment. This is a time for anybody to come up and give comment on anything that is not on the agenda. And please, if you do come up, you'll have five minutes, and we'd ask that you state your name. Okay? Oh, we do have one. Okay, great. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Dalton Janus, and I'm a promoter and marketing manager for Airport Raceway, which is located just outside of town on your way to Dodge City. The reason I came in today was hopefully to see what steps were needed to be taken or safety regulations need to be taken in order for us to allow not just everyone to use fireworks, which is for track officials to initiate fireworks during our weekly events out at the racetrack this season. We understand that that is a safety concern, obviously, with us being so close to proximity with one of the runways there at the airport. But we feel that we have all three structures of first responders on hand each night that would be able to communicate with us if it were safe, whether it be the weather permitting or, you know, incoming flights with the airport. You know, we don't want this to be a situation where drivers or fans are setting off fireworks, but we have control on whether we get to set these fireworks off or not. That way, it doesn't become a safety concern. With Airport Raceway, we've always been driven by safety for not only our drivers, our fans, anyone that attends the track, but just for the people around the track as well. So, we understand that that safety concern is obviously heightened, especially being so close to the airport. But we would like to see, you know, what steps we could take, if there are any, to possibly allow that for the season.
And you said every week?
No, so our season, it's really scattered. It starts in May, actually, late April of this month, and ends the last, I'm sorry, the first week of September. We have 14 events scheduled this season, spread out through the summer, with a couple doubleheader weekends that are kind of our, you know, big promotional weekends. That's bringing in a lot of, not just drivers from across the nation. I mean, it's bringing fans, spectators, people from all makes and ages of different ethnic ities. I mean, we bring in a huge crowd out there. So, you know, adding the firework element is a, you know, an added promotional aspect to what we do. But by any means, it's not something that we're trying to, you know, make it like, that's gotta be the number one thing. Our safety is what we look forward to the most out there. So, but it's a very small schedule, but we think it's a doable schedule for what we're asking.
Any other questions?
Do you know, do other types of the raceways, do other raceways use?
Yeah, so, you know, I think probably one of the easiest, I guess, demonstrations that, I guess, recommendations for you in the world of Outlaws, each track they go to, I mean, they actually have pyrotechnic fireworks that just, I mean, the minute those cars come down the French Railway four wide for a saluter, I mean, fireworks are shooting off as those cars go by. So, we're not looking to do anything at that, at that spectrum, but, you know, being able to shoot off a couple fireworks in the infield, and, you know, if it's something that the airport thinks that, you know, we can't do high-range fireworks, maybe more mid-level fireworks, I mean, we'll take what we can get, so. But there are other tracks, Dodge City Raceway, they use fireworks throughout their season. Hayes, Parkland Speedway, they allow fireworks at their facilities, but those facilities obviously aren't within a mile range of a very busy regional airport.
Okay. Does Ceylan have your contact, or somebody have your contact information, and we can...
I contacted someone. I do know I have Mr. Allen's contact information. I do have Mr. Sessina's contact information as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can continue. I know there's discussions out there. There's, there's multiple levels of approval that go beyond just the City Commission on this and those other parties. It's gonna be either yes or no, and that's the end of the discussion with respect particularly to the FAA. So, based on what we find out from that, I think we can put something for your consideration, and if, based on what we find out, it'll either have our recommendation or not have our recommendation, and with some explanation why, not just to you, but to the Garden City Raceway folks too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just one more additional thing. I don't know if it will matter in all or any. I know we are under the sanction of the city, but the residents that are across the highway are under, probably county residents, so I don't know if that will be a determining factor because they are allowed to shoot their own fireworks at their own dispersal. So, I don't know if that will, if that can help us in any way to try to lean any other parties that might be involved with this decision-making, but we definitely do appreciate you guys' time and consideration on this. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Garden City, Kansas.
All right. Chief, you wanna come on up? Or somebody?
I don't have anything, but we would ask that, this is something that we do every year. The communicators, they spend quite a bit of time getting ready for this, and then they have events throughout the week, something that lets them celebrate what they do for the city and the service that goes after the community. Our recommendation is obviously that we would love the support and approval of the proclamation and part of the City Commission.
I can't believe you didn't make the communicators communicate this, but yes. I saw you giving them a chance, so. I move that the governing body approve the mayor to proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And do you want me to read this now, or... Okay. And then, I see you've got a lot of people here. We can get a photo. And I know you especially would like to be in the front, right? Good, and I'll read this. So, whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is designated in the second week of April every year, recognized by our nation since 1991, and whereas over 5,700 primary and secondary public safety facilities field more than 240 million calls each year, and whereas the telecommunications that keep our 911 system running are the lifeline between the public and our first responders, serving as the calm voice as they ensure that the days, crisis, and challenges are met, and contributing to the apprehension of criminals, treatment of patients, and extinguishing of fires, and whereas public safety telecommunications exhibit professionalism, knowledge, and compassion during the performance of their jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and publicly salutes the service of 911 telecommunications in our community and in communities across the nation who do their part to help save millions of lives every day. Thank you for your dedication to our communities. Signed and sealed this fourth day of April, 2023. Cleared out the room.
Half the room.
Yeah.
Evidently, they're not big Arbor Day fans.
I can't imagine why.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in Garden City, Kansas. No one? No one's an Arbor Day fan?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing, or every year on Arbor Day, the Garden City Parks Department and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Kansas Forest Service hold a pre-planting ceremony at the school of the fifth grade Arbor Day poster contest winner. The contest and ceremony educate and bring awareness to elementary school children, the many benefits of planting and maintaining trees in our community. Also, the City of Garden City will be recognized as Tree City USA community for the 45th consecutive year. Some of the qualifications, there's four main standards. The first, Tree Board, Board Department, someone must be legally responsible for the care of all trees on city and town-owned property. The second one, Tree Care Ordinance. Basic public tree ordinance forms the foundation of the city's tree care program. It provides an opportunity to set good policies and mitigate with the force of law when necessary. The third standard, Community Forestry Program, with annual budget of at least $2 per capita. City trees provide many benefits, clean air, clean water, shade, beauty, to the name, a few of them, but they also require an investment to remain healthy and sustainable. By providing support at or above the $2 per capita minimum, the community demonstrates its commitment to grow and tend these valuable public assets. And then, the fourth and final standard, an Arbor Day Observation and Proclamation. An ineffective program for community trees would not be complete without an annual Arbor Day ceremony. Citizens join together and celebrate the benefits of community trees and work accomplished to plant and maintain. By passing and reciting of an official Arbor Day proclamation, public officials demonstrate their support for the community tree program and complete the requirements for becoming Tree City USA community. So, two alternatives for you. The governing body may approve the request to proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day. And then, the second alternative, the governing body may deny the request to proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the staff recommend approving the request to proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day. There's no fiscal note, and maybe you guys have a copy of the proclamation.
Now, is there an event planned yet for the schools? Is that scheduled?
It's gonna be, we were hoping to do it on Arbor Day, but unfortunately, the winner, the fifth grade winner is from Jenny Barker.
Oh, okay.
Field trip to Scott City on that Friday. So, we're actually gonna have the event on Thursday, April 27th. It starts at 3:00 p.m., and we would love to have any one of you join us. Mayor Euler, if you could actually do the proclamation there, that'd be great.
And you said Jenny Barker?
Yes, the one, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the request to proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
No, my daughter was one, she was, actually, was the Arbor Day poster winner one year, and so we, it was really fun, but we gotta go and plant it out there at the zoo. And so, when we visit that, we always talk about that being Maggie's, now she doesn't act like it's hers, but she doesn't take care of it or anything, but yeah. It's a really neat program. Thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, we, the winner did win the district. Won the state, but was able to win the district.
That's awesome.
Wow, that's pretty good. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And I think I can be there on the 27th, but one of us will be there to read this for you.
Yeah, I'll send you an email.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, you wanted to add?
Yes. I do have one proclamation that I'd like to add, and that is to recognize, and he is already not happy, and that would be to recognize Aaron Stewart as superintendent. He is leaving us, and we're going to miss him. I mean, you have done a lot of work for the Recreation Commission and for the City of Garden City, and so I would just ask my fellow commissioners if they would consider making a motion and seconding, and I know that there's a going-away party for him on Thursday, but we might just embarrass him and, yeah, and just do it here too, but no. But anyway, so.
Is there a day that you're gonna proclaim for him, or?
We are, the 6th of April.
Yeah, I move that we proclaim April 6th as Aaron Stewart Day. I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, I will read this on Thursday, unless you want to do it now, we can get a picture with all the commissioners. I think that sounds like a great idea. All right, so.
Twice, you could read it twice.
I know. Whereas, Aaron Stewart was appointed Recreation Superintendent to the Garden City Recreation Committee in 2016, and whereas, Aaron Stewart successfully led the Garden City Recreation Commission through 2020, improving the overall performance of Garden City Recreation Commission programs and facilities while also improving the financial health of the organization. And whereas, Aaron Stewart helped facilitate a merger between the Garden City Recreation Commission and the City of Garden City in late 2020, and whereas, since merging with the City of Garden City, Aaron Stewart has held the title of Parks and Recreation Director, and whereas, Aaron Stewart has held a senior management team position with the city, helping lead a team of highly valued city departments that include Recreation, Parks, Lee Richardson Zoo, Buffalo Dunes Golf Course, and Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. And whereas, Aaron Stewart will leave employment with the City of Garden City on April 7th, 2023, to continue his career with the City of Manhattan, Kansas. And whereas, Aaron Stewart's contributions to this community and organization will have a lasting positive impact. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 6th, 2023, as Aaron Stewart Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to this community, and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duties for the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed this fourth day of April, 2023.
No surprise. Jamie, would you like to be in the picture too?
I'm good. Yes.
That's true.
That's fine. I'll steal it because I asked.
Pretty sneaky, Mayor, so.
Well, you know.
That's good.
The report of the city manager is limited to the service and finance monthly sales tax report this meeting, so it's attached. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, those, or punt to Jared, more likely. The, I would give the commissioners an update, just a legislative update. This session, we've been tracking pretty closely, things that would impact our revenue. There's been a lot of bills that would have had a significant impact to our revenue streams, not the least of which would have been the local sales tax removal. And aside from that, the relationship of local sales tax that's gone into calculating the appropriate size of bond issues related to sales tax, things that were passed by our electorate to do with sales tax would impact those. But just kind of from an annual basis, we estimate, back-of-the-napkin math, and this is conservative, that it would be the equivalent of a 10-mil property tax increase. So, I'm not quite sure what the, those behind the local sales tax, what their, what their line of logic is, usually not from a group that loves property tax that much to try to do that. It would be similarly impactful from a dollar standpoint to Fannie County. Mil levy, that might translate to five or six mils, if I'm converting right. So, overall, just overnight, apples to apples, 15 to 16 mil increase locally, 10% property tax increase is the trade-off for that locally, and could be worse. The, not confident we have nailed that down exactly because we don't know what the definition of food, how broadly that might be interpreted. So, kind of be on the lookout for that, that, you know, directly impacts police, fire, Lee Richardson Zoo, parks, and streets most directly. On scale, that would, more than we appropriate, I believe, in the general fund towards the portion of streets that's covered with general tax money and parks maintenance. And you're looking at sort of decimating levels of cuts, the corresponding cuts that would need to be made if you were to avoid property tax increase to any of those other three remaining operations. Earlier testimony that we gave estimated around a third of the police department, half of the fire department, decommissioning not only the exhibits and the maintenance of the property, but also personnel related to more than half of Lee Richardson Zoo. So, sort of catastrophic things that are thrown around as political baseballs up in Topeka right now. And thankfully, our legislative delegation is, stood on the side of Garden City and protected local revenue streams as well as preserving home rule authority on some bills that really kind of went after your ability as local elected officials to respond to residents and to be held accountable by residents if they don't approve of your decisions. So, the, you know, I think kind of at a fundamental level, we continue to lobby for cities, Garden City to be ran by Garden Cityans and not be a Topeka-ran city, and we are thankful that our delegation is supportive of that concept as well. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. I do believe there, the local sales tax, while it was defeated, passed on the Senate side, defeated or didn't get out of committee. On the House side, it was a conferrable item, and so it came out of conference committee yesterday, and will be on the floor of both House, retooled. Bill will be on the floor of both chambers today is what's projected. So, we'll see how it fares in, in a vote of the full House and of the full Senate. Okay. On that cherry note, we'll move to meetings of note, eight, item eight. If any of those require RSVPs, if you could do those through the City Clerk's office, please. And I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2576-2023A.
Let me skip on down there. I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2576-2023A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to adopt the Garden City Downtown Plan 2023, and if approved, this would be ordinance number 2955-2023. Hello, John?
City of Garden City determined to update the 2013 downtown. Downtown plan goes with the comprehensive plan and focuses on development and improvements of the city's center business district. Plan establishes the goals for downtown for the next 10 to 20 years. Staff has been working with Rick Engineering on the Garden City Comprehensive Plan in downtown. The contract was signed on October 6th of 2020, and since then, staff has been working with Rick Engineering to gather data and input from the community. A large emphasis was placed on public outreach, so the schedule was extended to allow for a more robust process. Rick Engineering Company and staff held multiple events and stakeholder meetings to receive input from the community. Neighborhood NDS, along with Rick Engineering Company, held a pre-meeting session on January 17th of 2023 with the City Commission for a draft of both documents. At the meeting, it was determined to move forward with a final draft review by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission met on March 16th of 2023 and recommended approval and adoption of the 2023 Garden City Downtown Plan. There are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. The governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And the last alternative is the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with statements specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one, the governing body adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. And I'll turn it over to Rick for the quick presentation.
Hi, welcome. Good to see you again.
downtown vision. Lots of input also from the Chamber of Commerce and the local association. And we've checked in with the steering committee and with you all on the course. So some things from community engagement, some things came from the overall input of the community. Everyone wanted to see more things to do, in particular downtown, more entertainment. People want to see more housing across Garden City, and so downtown, these older corridors here leading to downtown were pinpointed as really good potential locations for additional housing to be located. People saw downtown as the heart of the community, they wanted us to bring it to life. They still see it as the heart of the city. And really, there's a need to select different amenities and programs to help retailers and existing businesses downtown. So that last point there, it's not just about creating new shiny objects and events, it's also to stimulate and help the existing retailers down here get over the hump and get to the next level. There's also a desire for more regional attractors, as we discussed, things like a civic center, sports arena, and so on and so forth. Those could be located near downtown, in particular down at the Fairgrounds complex, which is generally walkable from downtown, which is a good kind of nexus of activity there. So really, the need to connect, fit a park for the river and the Fairgrounds together, it's kind of a triangle of attraction here in the central part of the city. Not a note from the comp plan, people see the downtown as really the heart of Garden City. And also, people see the need for vitality and character, both inward and outward, which again speaks to redevelopment of the downtown and stimulating areas that lead into downtown. So again, regional attractors, skip over this, we've done over this before, conference center, sports arena, ice skating rink, as mentioned, for the downtown, that'd be an outdoor skating rink as opposed to an indoor. And then these along the river, which could be a nice tie-in to the downtown as well. So focusing more on the downtown plan. Here's the vision statement in the downtown plan. Downtown is the heart of Garden City. It's envisioned to be a vibrant, culturally diverse, multi-generational hub characterized by its strong sense of place, eclectic variety of shops, vibrant art scene, dynamic events, and forward-facing theaters. So that's a pretty good summation of the whole scene for the future for downtown. So as mentioned in previous presentations, expansions of downtown, so that could be to the east, Fulton, which has several properties that could be redeveloped and tied into downtown. And you see in this graphic how that could happen over time, the different street skate amenities, and eventually new development going there along Fulton to the east. That's a view looking west from Seventh and Fulton. And then other ideas here, entertainment districts, as we discussed for a while, that would be up on Stevens Avenue, the Dagwell Street that runs from Pine and Main towards the northern west. It's actually a pinpoint on the illustrative plan for downtown, so the first time it's out there publicly as a concrete location, concrete build of the city. This is the entertainment district from the Exchange and Fort Collins Plaza, it's a common consumption area where you can get your beverage and rum around and place some cornhole or whatnot. So it's a good attraction for that part of downtown Fort Collins, along with the revenues there. We've also discussed a public market or event space, that's a market from Santa Fe and Mexico. So it's an indoor space that could be used for indoor market, like a farmer's market, a crime market, could be used for cultural markets, can be used for events. The keys there are those slide-out garage doors there, so you can have, if you have a nice day, let the air in, let the wind in, maybe not today, but something like that would provide flexibility. We also have, coming up, input from commission, I believe, and also from the downtown stakeholders. We added in mention about the State Theater and the Windsor Hotel hotels as potential catalyst for downtown. So we know you're doing a RFP for the State Theater, and I came to the town last night and saw in the paper about the grants falling, so the Windsor's once again front-page news. So I know it's a ongoing process, but obviously that's something that everyone in town wants to work on and get to a better future, shall we say. Expansion of food truck parties, so Janet and Leandra have already jumped out and they're holding weekly food truck parties even starting in March. It's a little bit chilly sometimes in March, but it starts to set the expectation that it's going to be more than just once a month. People know on a Friday, they come down and hang out downtown, anywhere from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also working to get a wide variety of food truck vendors, maybe some new ones, ones in the Arby area, things like that. So that's an area for, you're going to see, already seen here and will see the rest of the year. People also wanted to see additional amenities and entertainment for families, for things like a splash pad, that could be Stevens Park or somewhere else downtown, just a reason to bring kids downtown, things like that. Combined with that street scape and placement enhancement, things like alleys, improved signage, welcome signage like that, how do you folks sign, welcome to the olden. Argued from really the beginning of the project, is that the street scape overall is in pretty good shape here, it's more about just getting reasons for people to come downtown. Which why we focused on the attractors and the energy things like the entertainment district and so forth. But, you know, this kind of goes along with it over time. So additional areas to highlight the downtown plan, this first one came out of our meeting with the downtown stakeholders. We at least mentioned in the illustrative plan and in the text, potential Grant Avenue, which you see there on the right, could be actually an additional festival street. So that street could also be closed off for events, could do some enhancements to it. And it does a fairly low traffic street, it's fairly doable. I think this has been mentioned in the past as well, but we want to make sure to enter that into the plan here as we finalize it. You all back in, well, always not here, but Chris Tristano was the one who mentioned it back in January, we added mention of enhancements to pedestrian crossings, but the railroad tracks, that means on Main Street, Fourth, and I think it's 10th over there, the crossover. So we're going to have development going to the south, which may involve more residential units and so forth to the south, and we want to make sure people can get safely into the main park downtown. The final bullet point on this slide, it was also, also came from a discussion with the downtown group, that they see some headwinds or frustrations with what they want to do on Main Street or Fulton with events and redesigns over time. So we added mention, and again, it's not mandating, but it's to explore if needed, decommissioning Main and Fulton from KDOT system, which would allow you to have a little more control over what happens on those streets. And many towns around Kansas have done that with KDOT, so that's something you can look at down the line. Other things we wanted to mention, that since the last time we saw you on the downtown plan, the farmer's market, that indoor facility, that obviously would take a bit, a good deal more money and more planning, but a near-term option might be just to build a good shade pavilions like this. This is from downtown Oldham Park. This was built in 1990 and really helped that farmer's market grow the last 30 years and really let its ongoing rebirth, that downtown district. And so something like this, you know, say you put on a parking lot across the street here. When markets are happening or other events, you can certainly have it for parking that shaped it, which would be a nice benefit. You can also explore cultural markets, people really like that idea of having perhaps Hispanic-oriented Latino markets, just kind of open-air markets that really resembles the cultures many of the folks that came from. And then there was quite a bit of discussion with the downtown property owners about finding tax credits or tax abatements or similar strategies to really make it worth their while to do improvements to businesses. There was some pretty strong, you know, passion statements from those folks about that, fear that if they were to do improvements to their properties, their property tax goes up, and so they don't really see the benefit. Obviously, with improvements, you can sometimes get higher rent. But we added in at least mention that there could be additional tax credits or tax abatements added for the downtown area specifically to incentivize building up, Trent, you all know, lives part of the time in Hutchinson, and so I passed in there recently. You always talk about their downtown, I got to say, it seems like 80 or 90% of the buildings in that downtown, they're first up, they got new windows, theirs, 50, they're nice. And they've used a kind of similar incentive program there. So it's something to look at. We also mentioned, based upon discussion with the downtown property owners, language which really just suggests you continue the effort to look at parking facilities downtown. There was a little more focus on that back in the 2013 plan, but we mentioned here that you consider parking garages as other parking facilities as the downtown grows, because obviously, if you have more activity down here, it's going to become more of a concern. We did do a detailed parking study, but that's something that, you know, I'm sure that it'd be a good problem to have, to have that need to do more parking planning and design. Connecting to the broader bike and walking trail network, we've, I've been there for a while, enhanced bike facilities downtown. We have added the bike lane on Campus Drive from Kansas Avenue to Mary, and something that was missing from the one you saw back in January, so we missed that. So there's the illustrative plan, this is really the same graphic you saw back in January. It illustrates really the potential redevelopment and expansion of downtown's general footprint to the south, towards the fairgrounds, towards Fennec Park, and also east along Fulton, about a block north or south of Fulton, over towards Fourth Street. So the buildings you see there are areas of potential redevelopment. The areas that aren't colored in are where there's existing residential, so we're sensitive to that. And again, it's just conceptual, but as we discussed, I believe, with you all last time, if there's certain properties that are a house and say wants to redevelop here in the downtown, say on North Main, that certainly could happen. But it calls out the entertainment district, calls out the potential festival street on Grant Avenue, and it also, if you study this on the actual exhibit, it actually calls out the core of downtown. So the broader downtown is really more a residential expansion, mixed-use expansion, but the core of downtown is identified as well. Implementation section, calls out the department in charge for different action items in here, identifies other partners, identifies low being high priority, the general cost level of, for each action item. So we had kind of $1 sign, $2 sign, $3 sign, and we did go through, if you were to study this since the version we had with you in January, we've added some very high-level cost estimates for some of these items. Other ones, I mean, there's, you have to go through more formal study to really get to any power, right? But things like splash pad, you know, I'm sure Aaron and his successor can pinpoint that for us. So summary of final items in January, I've already mentioned most of these, so we added a paragraph actually to discuss how a downtown plan reconversion will improve retail conditions, actually came out of discussion with the planning commission. Just added a paragraph emphasizing that the intent here is really, when you get down to it, enough events, enough attractors, especially ones that happen in the evening, it's eventually going to not just bring more people downtown who don't shop, but eventually people are going to spend more time down here. And we'll probably leave more property owners and businesses downtown, perhaps expand their hours, which should help downtown as well. We've reported on some tables, we actually mentioned about the pavilion for a farmer's market, we added language about the pede crossing, Grant Avenue, and we mentioned all the stuff that I've already covered here, essentially in the previous slides. So some closing thoughts, really, as I mentioned, the foundation is the street scape, and you just, first time I've driven into downtown Garden City, it resembled many really great downtowns across the Midwest, just the only need to kind of bring some energy back here, activate it, right? This is a little bit of, you know, my thoughts as well, but the city needs to make priority for downtown investment incentives, your RFP for the State Theater is a great first step, you know, of the other financial incentives as well, but that'll help quite a bit. But downtown really is a great selling point for Garden City, just more people who are visiting town need to know about it, right? So that'll, that'll all will help. And make sure energy diffuses around downtown, there's a lot, this is about that of the plan, not just Stevens Park, not just one area, but try to distribute these amenities in different areas so it all kind of works together. Tied with larger goals for infill and reinvestment in all parts of town, the last two are kind of rah-rah statements, so get some early wins to build momentum, so downtown business effort to really push the food truck parties here will be hopefully a good first momentum for the downtown plan. And, you know, these improvements can be fitted with the 20-year plan, as long as you keep knocking down some wins every year or two, that's key. So with that, we thank you all for your discussion and this is our final presentation. Good luck to the City of Garden City. One more.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Questions?
Britt, I think there was some comments, too, I didn't see that they were addressed on here, was the fact that, you know, downtown needs to be retail, and how do we, how do we get retail downtown? I know that's kind of hard to put in words in the, you know, in this downtown master plan, but I think there needs to be some discussion in there about retail, because we see infill being just, you know, professional service, which is great, but retail is what I think downtown is always talking about. So can we add language in there like that, that somehow, and it doesn't have to be a representation of this again, just, just what, you know, a section of that that needs to be put in there? Because I know that was asked, too, at that stakeholder meeting, after we had that meeting, after the commission, so.
We have a paragraph about retail, we can certainly add more.
Yeah.
As a condition of your adoption.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people, because the people I talked to, I have an office downtown, too, but they, you know, they really want the retail back in downtown, so, so, you know, I know it's tough, but I think, I think that's what sticks out more than anything for downtown, is that the, you know, the vision is, needs to be, needs to be that. Everything else is a plus, but.
Yeah. We can certainly add a few paragraphs in the regard.
I did have other, a couple others, and I know I talked to you about this on the, on the comprehensive plan, but the map on page 37, it's, the words are just upside down for the street names. If we could rotate those 180 degrees.
Sure.
As we, I guess, as I talked about, too, on the comprehensive plan. And then on the second sheet, get it back up there.
Page two.
Yes, page two. So, you know, you go through the acknowledgements, city commission, and list everybody's name. One, you know, we have two assistant city managers, and it just lists the one. So I don't know if that was the way we did it also on the comprehensive plan, but I'd like to add all those people on there.
Certainly. I mean, just so you know, it wasn't intentionally. One of them was with Trent and so forth, but we'll certainly have a second, no problem.
And I think, yeah, that was, that was it.
Any other comments? Shannon, anything yet?
Thank you. Well, we have to obviously vote on it and stuff, but I just wanted to say thank you for all of the work and the additional work, and I know, working with all kinds of different entities and people, it's not always, you know, it takes a little bit of, you know, masterful communication and just being able to think through and decipher what everybody's saying, but I really like this plan, I think it looks, looks very nice, and I think it will serve us well moving forward, so appreciate all your work.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance number 2955-2023.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I did want to make a comment. We really appreciate that you went out and made the effort to get input, because I'll tell you, that's really what made the comprehensive plan and this plan worth it.
Yeah.
Because without the input, and I know it wasn't easy, there's lots of impediments and all kinds of obstacles, but you really broke through the barriers and did the work, and so we really appreciate that. And we know it was extra time and extra effort, and you can come visit Garden City anytime. You, you can move, if you'd like. Your offices, I mean, we have a really nice areas, other than downtown, because that's retail. I'm just kidding. Yeah, we have others in the second floor offices when you guys establish an office here, so.
Well, thank you. I mean, you do what you got to do, and we did what we had to do to get the input we needed, so it was enjoyable. I enjoyed all the summer days of the food truck. So forth, and, you know, we'll visit here, you know, I got family in St. Louis, so what I got to do is drop about 80 miles south and.
That's right.
Probably. Thank you all, Britt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations regarding temporary use and any other cross-references. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2956-2023. Alicia.
Mayor and commissioners, staff is requesting to amend the temporary uses permitted section to allow for concrete batch plants during construction in residential, commercial, and industrial districts. The concrete mixed batch plant would be a temporary use for a maximum duration of 18 months. The concrete batch plant would be required to fulfill a temporary use permit that would be reviewed internally by Neighborhood and Development Services. The concrete batch plant would need to meet the following conditions. Located onsite, used for the construction of onsite work, minimum of 200 feet away from any adjacent developed lot, hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., a minimum of 10 open acres, and a maximum duration of 18 months, however, extensions may be granted by the governing body. The amendment will help protect some of the surrounding areas where development is occurring by limiting the amount of concrete trucks and worker traffic.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Garden City zoning regulations regarding temporary use and any other cross-references. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2956-2023. Alicia.
Mayor and commissioners, staff is requesting to amend the temporary uses permitted section to allow for concrete batch plants during construction in residential, commercial, and industrial districts. The concrete mixed batch plant would be a temporary use for maximum duration of 18 months. The concrete batch plant would be required to pull a temporary use permit that would be reviewed internally by Neighborhood and Development Services. The concrete batch plant would need to meet the following conditions: located onsite, used for the construction of onsite work, minimum of 200 feet away from any adjacent developed block, hours of operation 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., a minimum of 10 open acres in a maximum duration of 18 months, however, extensions may be granted by the governing body. The amendment will help protect some of the surrounding areas where development is occurring by limiting the amount of concrete trucks and worker traffic. Attaches the proposed amendment and includes some minor changes to the other sections within Article 21 to clean up the language and provide more consistency. The planning commission recommended approval of the amendment as presented at the March 16, 2023 meeting. Your alternatives would be the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. The governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by two-thirds majority vote, or the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff would recommend alternative one, approval of the proposed ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance 2956-2023.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. So I know one resident raised a, a question about like dust and how they're going to keep, does there any requirement in that ordinance that talks about like, I mean, I know that concrete is a little bit different than normal, well, rather dust that we breathe in around here, but I'm just curious about, is there anything in that ordinance? And I didn't get a chance to reach out to you before, that really talks about maintaining that or keeping the dust down?
So the ordinance does specify, but it would also be covered in their slip that they would have to submit through the state and through us. And so we do have a infrastructure inspector that's going around to all the places that have a slip in place to make sure that they maintain compliance.
And I know the 10 acres, I indicated, well, they do have to have 10 acres, and so I know that's part of the, you know, keeping that down too. So I just want to make sure and ask that question, so.
I just had a question on aspect of this, because we are just asking, I'm trying to clarify what we're asking for on this, because it's for the temporary use part, correct?
Correct.
But then we had all these other changes with the other sections, PF, temporary, well, temporary uses, section four, section five, and section six didn't change, but the section two had everything else.
Yeah, so we moved some of them around. So the temporary use article was kind of jumping around everywhere, so to clean it up, we kind of, but we put them by zoning district to help better, so we can follow them a little bit more.
Yeah, I understand why, you know, it kind of had to be that way, but it was just kind of needing clarification on what we're approving for. And it's for the purpose of the temporary use for this project, or for a certain project, or is it just code?
No, it's a certain project. Yeah, we're amending the zoning regulations in total, so anybody that meets those requirements can get a temporary use permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be resolution number 3007-2023.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners. Before you today, I have a three-year-old car, one motor vehicle, a white SUV located at 1203 Latvian Boulevard. We have tried to reach out to the owners to do this very specific case, and were unable to do so. We did send two notices out February 9th of 2023 and March 2nd of 2023 with no response for this case. As you may recall in previous history, we have had communication with them, but this one we have not. To this date, that one has been mitigated or abated. The alternatives for you, hey, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, which will allow staff to abate the issue. And number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommendation is the approval of the attached resolution. The fiscal note is any costs associated with the abatement of the vehicle will be assessed to the parcel or ground closest to the vehicle.
Okay. Any questions?
I move to approve resolution number 3007-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anything else? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to designate the future Petrores residences as a rural housing incentive district within the city.
Mayor, the State of Kansas passed a statute that allows cities of a certain population within counties of a certain population to offer incentives for vertical housing. Garden City meets the qualifications required by the state and is able to establish such arjadees pending the approval of the Secretary of Commerce. In order to obtain approval from the Secretary of Commerce, the city must first pass a resolution making certain findings and determination as to the availability of housing within the city. Staff will then publish the resolution and send the required information to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. The resolution includes one potential arjadee property that was not considered in previous resolution and will be known as Petrores residences. The area of the property is plus or minus 22.88 acres and is approximately located at North Jenny Barker Road and Highway 156. The developer at this time intends to build duplexes and apartment complexes. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one, approval.
And what is the resolution number 30?
3008-2023.
I move to approve resolution 3008-2023.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
On the resolution itself, about four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, whereas is down? It states at the last, 2020 to 2025, and that a total of 715 housing units are needed for the five-year period from 2025 to 2020. I think that should be 2030. Just that little correction there.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with that amendment.
All right. Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a local government services agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County for wastewater services to support Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A.
A single-family residential development has been proposed within the corporate limits of Garden City, but within Sanitary Sewer District Number Three that is operated and maintained by Finney County. There is a desire for the development to be served by Sanitary Sewer District Number Three, which necessitates an agreement for the transmission and treatment of wastewater between the city and the county. The county will provide the transmission of wastewater and the city will provide the treatment. The county passed resolution number 10-2023 on March 20th of 2023 that provided the fees scheduled related to the development. If approved both governing bodies, by both governing bodies, the developer will begin making infrastructure improvements shortly thereafter. And then I just want to add, the county commission did approve the agreement yesterday. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the local governmental services agreement between the city and the county for sanitary sewer services to support Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A development. Agreement between city of Garden City and Finney County for transmission and treatment of wastewater at Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1. The governing body may not approve the local governmental services agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County for transmission and treatment of wastewater at Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A, where the governing body may provide alternative direction. And staff would recommend alternative one, approval of the agreement.
I move that we approve the local government services agreement between the city and the county for sanitary sewer services to support Sunset Terrace Estates Phase 1A development.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an electric interconnection agreement between the city of Garden City and Oycost Development Corporation for Phase 1 of the Hunter's Glen development.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve electrical interconnection agreement between the city of Garden City and Oycost Development Corporation for Phase 1 of the Hunter's Glen development. Oycost Development Corporation is involved with building multi-bedroom residential units in Phase 1 of the Hunter's Glen development. Oycost Development Corporation is receiving federal funding for this housing project. It is required to install parallel generation renewable energy systems rooftop solar for each living unit. This requires the city and the developer to enter into a special electrical interconnection agreement for the 86 residential units in Phase 1 of the Hunter's Glen development. The city electric department alone will lead a council for the city of Garden City has prepared a more streamlined interconnection agreement for the purpose of administration, inspection, and commissioning of the 86 renewable systems. This agreement, if approved by the governing body today, does not change the existing parallel generation policy approved by the governing body on October 16th, 2018. The governing body may approve the electrical interconnection agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the electrical interconnection agreement, or the governing body may approve the electrical interconnection agreement direct staff to find an alternative. Staff recommends the governing body approve electrical interconnection agreement, and there's no physical impact to the electric department.
I have another question. So on the agreement, on item 10, I talk about credit, and I just want to make sure, this is a big paragraph, and I want to make sure I'm understanding. So we wouldn't actually ever pay back the homeowner? We just basically, we zero out their bill? Because it talks about 150%? Or do we, would we, could we actually end up in a, in a situation where we would owe the homeowner or the, or the building owner for the dollars? Or is it just a wash when it gets to zero?
So it's, it's the renter that is subject to any credits.
Okay.
Based upon what they would put back into the system. They still have to pay their normal fees, which is the customer connection charge, as well as what they purchase from the city at retail. And then what we credit them is the avoided cost, 150% of that.
So there isn't a situation where we'd actually pay them anything? It's just that they would just, we'd just reduce their bill by that if there was?
Their bill would be credited or reduced.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't understanding. I mean, that's, because I know that solar has been something a lot of people have discussed. I just want to make sure, you know, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity and, and an alternative, but again, I just want to make sure that there are some fees for maintaining an electrical system that we still have, that, I mean, I don't want, you know, I understand that we still have to pay our bills too, so. Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Fair motion?
I move to approve the electrical interconnection agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the electrical interconnection agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We have a executive session, and there's no action anticipated following that executive session for preliminary discussions related to acquisition of real property. So that would leave the consent agenda and commission reports, if we would like to do those first. I would ask that the commission pull D3, and we will discuss that separately, but if you would want to take, if there aren't any other items to pull, we'll discuss, or you could take up consent agenda items one, two, and four in one action.
Okay. I move that we approve consent agenda items D1, 2, and 4.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under item D3, we group consider all these contractors' licenses. We would ask that you approve this list with the exception of the Fast Eddie's Construction under Class A General Contractor. That's a 2023 renewal, and we have some clarifying questions on the application that we've asked that contractor, and he has not followed up, so we'll, if the answers to those questions are satisfactory, we would have a renewal placed on the next meeting instead of this one.
There's two licenses there.
I'm sorry.
The Class A and the.
Thank you.
Yeah, one is Class.
Okay. Under the Class DP Plumbing Contractor, okay. Yeah, so we would ask that you consider this list minus those two licenses.
I mean, that we approve the contractor's licenses for April 4, 2023, with the exception of Class D licensed Lozard Plumbing and the, is that right?
No.
Which one? I'm trying to.
Under Class A General Contractor renewal, it's Fast Eddie's Construction, and then the same contractor under the Class DP Plumbing Contractor.
Okay, I'm sorry. So let me try this again. So I move that we approve the contractor's license with the exception of Fast Eddie's Construction under Class A General Contractor and Class DP Plumbing Contractor.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to, I know it's a, it's a form of enact, and how does it get to here, I guess? Why, it wouldn't have been stopped before it got put onto this, to our, our agenda, I guess, is what I'm asking. That application should have been processed through NDS, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So how it works, and we spoke about this with you a little bit, the process has always been contractors come in, submit the applications, go through this formality to the governing body again. The assumption is day one, we start working, we're going to try to revise this a little bit, make it a little bit more official. With this specific case or license, some things can apply after the receipt of it. And so let me ask for all the information that wasn't given to us.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
So then, going forward, then you're going to have a different process or a more robust process with a little bit more formality, is what you're indicating, Trent?
The intent's the same, it's just going to be more, I guess robust, if you're right word, more intentional on the applicant to either comply or not comply with their own additional requirements, or not requirements, but authorization from them, if you will. Right now, it's attached these items. You don't attach them, we have staff, we don't know what's up, what's not out there. The future application will probably go back to what we had and with some revisions, which will have a line that's intentionally being initial, do not have these outstanding issues. And then if they come to life, we know that it was filled out, maybe some other known use fraudulent, but we'll just, this type of application, just, just let. Do you have a further to add if I missed the marks?
That makes sense.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion carries.
That ticks here are the business items.
All right, move on then to commission reports. Commissioner Dick.
All right. First, congratulations to Aaron, and then thanks for all the work, especially if you haven't been here the whole time that he's been here, kind of the work that he did with the rec and, and kind of getting everything going in the right direction, it's been greatly appreciated, and thank you for your time. And I know getting back out east is something that's probably pretty dear to your heart, so looking, or not looking forward, but I'm, I'm happy for the opportunity that you're going to get with this, so thank you for your service. Also, Britt, looks like he left, but just like the commissioner said, thanks for the work. I know we, whoa, we have put him through the ring or some on this whole process, and I think we got a good product out of, out of it, and I know there's a lot of extra work going in there. Tomorrow is, Hunton will be in town looking at the community facilities, so going around with that ad hoc, I forget the whole name that they use for that committee, but we'll be going around and looking at community facilities, so that'll be a good thing. We mentioned it briefly, but if we look at the actual sales tax collections, it's what. We mentioned it briefly, but if we look at the actual sales tax collections, it was another record-setting February for all time, we were getting close to a million dollars. Not the same thing as distributions, because remember, there's like Starbong, that's set aside here, but biggest collection ever reported for us. So that was good to see. And then thanks again to all of our representatives at the state level that are fighting for things for our citizens and do realize how important some of these issues are and the difference between removal of something like state-level food tax and state and local level food tax. And recognizing that, I know that we've got some good people fighting on our side up there. So I want to just thank all those people that are doing that and actually listening to what the cities are having to say, so.
Mr. Andrew.
So I want to say thank you to all of the people, all the crews out there doing the city cleanup. I mean, there is a lot. And so I saw them with, you know, all kinds of equipment. And so I really appreciate not only this being available, but all the, it is a lot of extra work, and no, they never say a word about it, and it really enhances our city. So I just want to say thank you. We're always reminding all of our neighbors, and they remind, but lots of times when you put it out, it's not even there by the time you get there, so that's great. I did drive by the skate park, which was, it's really looking nice. I'm so excited about that opening. And also, I saw that they're actually putting the tiles on the monument or the art installation. I don't know if you go inside of it to get your picture taken, you know, but I'll have somebody else do that, so. I also just want to, you know, I really was really aware of the latest high-wind days. I was driving back from, back from Manhattan, actually, and I'm not going to visit there until after Aaron moves there. This is just my goal. I'm just kidding you. I was driving back from Manhattan, but I mean, these high-wind days, and I just want to say thank you to the city crews. And, you know, I know it's very dangerous, especially with electricity and those kind of things. And I mean, they have really done a great job of keeping things together, and it just highlighted the need for those, the brush trucks. I mean, we got to ride in the firefighters, but I'll tell you, those are going to really save southwest Kansas. I think they'll be a huge benefit to our, to our area. So final, I just want to say thank you to Aaron. I mean, I don't know what you really say, someone who's really come in and called this place home for so many years, but came in and jumped in with both feet, really became a part of the community and decided that, you know, this is, hey, this is where I'm going to live, I'm going to make this the best place to live. And I know he's done a lot of things in the community. I mean, you could, you could mention a lot of things, but I really appreciate your, just your heart and your dedication to all of us. Yeah, we'll miss you. And I mean, and at first, I'll admit, I was angry. You know, so I've gone through this whole thing of, what is that, the loss, the grief cycle? So at first, I was really angry. I'm, I'm up to the point where, you know what, I want to be, I want to be where Commissioner Dick is and encourage you as you go there. So I'm still working on that part, so. Maybe by the sixth, and if there's cake, I'll update it there, so. But no, I just wanted to say thank you. And I know that the thing that I really appreciate about you is it's not been about you, it's really been about how the leadership here building. And I, you know, visit a lot of your facilities, and so watching the leadership and watching them in action. I mean, you have some honorary people. I mean, two of them are here today. You have some honorary people that you have to wrangle. So I mean, you know, I don't know how you do it, but I am just really excited about what you're leaving behind. You know, I know you're taking forward a lot of experience and a lot of really great, hopefully, wins that Garden City has not only helped you but supported you through. But also, I really appreciate what you're leaving behind in that. There's a really a structure that I think is, is very well structured, and I think there's a lot of things going forward. So we will definitely miss you, and so, and we're looking forward to you being back east and being a huge proponent of Garden City, so. And that's all.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Aaron, before I get to you after that.
Get it to him.
Attended the Chamber event. That was, you know, that was a great time with Echelon Front, Steve, hearing him again, talk about leadership, and it kind of sets that mentality again of how we should be ran as a city and come together as a community and just kind of stay out there and stay focused and just share that collaboration with everybody. So great event. Thanks to the Chamber, putting that on. Also, cleanup, you know, you kind of touched on that, that shit's going to be tough. I didn't say, that didn't, it's going to be tough, sorry. Edit that one. It's going to be tough with the winds out there today, so.
Now we're going to have a delay.
It's probably happened before, but.
You're just doing stuff for Facebook reasons now, aren't you?
I'm turning red. You can't tell because of my color. Yes, Arbor Day's coming up. Let's celebrate, celebrate trees and fresh air with this, with this minor wind. So thanks for the newsletter, y'all. That's, this is, thanks, Matt. I know you didn't, or you got help putting this together, but this was, this is great information. I mean, you, you put this, and it's, and there's a lot of good information. That's all I got to say. So Jamie, I don't know if you had a hand in that, but great job. So that's, that's good for everybody to just read and touch on that, but. And then lastly, Aaron, I can remember the first day I met you, you probably didn't know me then. I was, you know, you were at the rec, I was on softball team, I was the coach, and you came in there. And I remember you came in there with like an attitude that you weren't going to just change everything up. Like it was, you know, you were getting with staff, you were talking to Jared. I remember you were figuring out a way to get, make things better. That's kind of what I remembered about you that first day. So that was, and you've come through this, to the city with, with that same mentality on, you know, working together as a team and how can we get to where we need to be and how far can we go? So appreciate you for that, and good luck on your next journey. So we're going to miss you. Thanks.
All right. Yes, on that note, so I was actually on the rec commission who hired Aaron, and on a good day, he thanks me, and on a bad day, he blames me. So, but it's really been, I can believe it's been, what, six years that you've been here, and it's been really a joy to see you come in. You know, when you make those hiring decisions for key positions like that, it's hard, and when you're up against good competition. But Aaron, you've more than surpassed any expectations that we had, and we wish you luck, we wish you well in Manhattan. Not too much luck, though, no. But anyway, thank you for all that you've done for the city and will continue to do moving forward in your career. I enjoyed being able to give the welcome to the Citizens Academy. That is a nice group of people this year, and well, it's just a nice mix of community members and city employees. So I really enjoyed, you know, kind of going around and asking people why they wanted to be a part of the Citizens Academy and visiting with them for a little bit. So thank you to all of, all of the staff who put time in and really kind of do a deep dive into the different departments, because I know it takes a lot of extra time to do that. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are willing to do that on behalf of our community, so thank you. I also had a chance to give the welcome to the Daughters of Isabella, which is an auxiliary women's, Catholic women's group. They're actually auxiliary off of the Knights of Columbus. They had their state convention here in town, and so it was nicely attended event and had an opportunity to learn a little bit more about that organization, but that, some of the things that they are doing on a state scale is also kind of nice because there were people from all over the state, especially a lot from Kansas City, who were into our, in our city and had a lot of complimentary things to say about us. So it's always nice to have that happen as well. So that is all I have, but with that, we are going, we have an executive session.
Yes, mayor. We ask that you consider going into executive session under the statute listed on item 12C. It's pertaining to preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property and specifically for the purpose of considering property for city services.
And for how long?
10 minutes.
10 minutes and with what staff?
I think the city attorney and I would be sufficient.
If we could have just a few minutes break before we start.
Sure. Yeah, we could, 25 after does that work? Okay. Start from 2:20, or 2:25 to 2:35.
Say that again, 2:20?
2:25 to 2:35.
And again, mayor, oh, well, I'll let you take care of the motion.
I'll make the motion to consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-431, 4319B6, pertaining to preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property and services with the city, along with attorney Cunningham and city manager Matt Allen for, from 2:25 to 2:35.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go into executive session at 2:25.
And mayor, again, we will.